Ask Pastor Doug Pratt from First Presbyterian Church to please come up and lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor and council members for the privilege of praying for you. Heavenly Father, thank you for all your blessings to us. It is appropriate that whenever we gather, we remember the things we have to be grateful for, including a free nation that we celebrated its birthday yesterday, and thank you for this wonderful community we're a part of and the privilege of living in one of the most beautiful parts of your creation. Lord, we pray for our city. We pray that it might be a place where all of its citizens can prosper. We pray that it is a place that can be an example to others of how a community can work together for the common good. And now I pray for these our elected leaders, that you might give them wisdom, that you might give them courage, that you might give them insight, compassion, and an ability to guide and lead us in the right way. So bless this meeting, I pray, and all that will happen as a result of it. And I pray this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Mr. Dewitt, please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilwoman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Slacta.
Mayor Simmons.
Councilman Flynn.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Here.
Got the summer shift here today. Public comment on agenda items, please. Hey Brenda.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Brenda Brooks. I'm the Executive Director of the Crew Land and Water Trust. So I wanted to address item B, under the consent agenda, for the crew concert. I want to thank you for your past support as a cosponsor. This past year, we raised just over $30,000, and that all went to our environmental education programs, and I hope to look forward to continued support from the council. And by the way, we're finally opening up the trails in Benita Springs. Yes, finally. It'll be January 2019, grand opening January 19th. Hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tina Shuklat-Bull, and I'm here at the request of Arlene Hunter. I am on the consent agenda for landscape grants under PilteLLC. There's three properties, and if there's any questions, I'll be willing to answer those, and just wanted to lend my support for the old 41 improvements, and so happy to see them coming to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's William Rowe. I'm a resident on Pennsylvania Avenue, and I'm here to comment for the, some of the other residents on Pennsylvania concerning traffic between, well, traffic all the way up and down Pennsylvania. But we have, we're concerned about dogs and kids and the speed that traffic's going down there. We've already had one person killed in the last few years. We've had a number of people have not be able to negotiate the S-turns at Tennessee. It's gotten to the point where we've had a number of dogs killed. We've got neighbors that have put their houses up for sale because of that, because their pets are a concern. I have two dogs. We have small kids. We are foster parents, so we have small kids and young kids still in the home, and the speed people go up and down Pennsylvania Avenue with the sidewalk being only 12 inches from the, from the road there, they have, if a dog decides it wants to look to the left, it doesn't have, cars don't have any time to react unless they're doing the speed limit. And when we're backing out of our driveway, just this morning, I had somebody who was at Tennessee, and I started to back out, and by the time I was going straight, they were upset because they were already on my tailgate going east. So it's, it's a long stretch which entices people to, to use it in lieu of Benita Beach Road, thinking that they can go all the way to a royal faster that way, and it's a residential street in essence. I understand that it's a through area, but it's still primarily residences there with kids, dogs, part of the community, and it's extremely dangerous. And anything that we could possibly do to obstruct their, that long straightaway, I mean, they go 60, 70 miles an hour. I get passed on that street more often than I would like to know, you know, that I would like to think about. So anything we can do, I know that Mr. Gibson thinks we ought to have a stop sign at Wisconsin, and I think that would be a big help, but I think that we probably could use something further down as well. But anything, the traffic is a huge issue there. Thank you for your hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier, I thought you were talking about Wisconsin and Pennsylvania Avenue, and I know at one corner of the west, would be the northwest corner, there's a big, big piece of property there that's all overgrown. I understand somebody purchased that recently. It's probably blocking the view, probably should be trimmed back. I don't know what the road right away is on Pennsylvania, but it's awful small. You know, we, the city had, got the sidewalk built in the first place. I remember when that went in, there wasn't even a sidewalk in there. But I run, I drive that road quite often, and I drive it 30 miles an hour, and I've never been passed. It's a law enforcement issue there. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else in the public? All right, thank you.
Oh, me.
Oh, Alex, okay.
Alex Grant, 11-851 East Terry Street, former member of the local planning agency, the first local planning agency the city had, and former city councilman for four years here. I'm addressing the item 6C Regional Planning Council, and here's my take on this. We have to understand that we do have regional issues across county areas, especially neighboring counties, regarding water issues, environmental issues, air pollution, et cetera. In other words, also some land management issues, wildlife management issues, and also transportation issues involving US highway systems and what were both federally and state-funded initially rail programs. And these things are not just affecting Lee County or Collier County, but affect an area, for instance, could be south, everything south, from the Polk-Harty County line to here, to, into Collier County. And same thing from Tampa, from Hillsborough County and Hillsborough, Manatee County border all the way down into Collier County and even towards Dade County. So this is what I'm thinking about, and on the Regional Planning Council, we, we need to look at that. We not, I don't think we ought to throw out the baby with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else? Going, going? No? Okay. So now we have proclamations and presentations. So a few months ago, is this on?
Yeah, it's on.
All right, okay. A few months ago, we started inviting some of the new businesses to town to come to city council to have a meet and greet before our meeting, and we did that today. And now even in the middle of the summer, we have a very good group here today, so I'd like to invite them all up. Vera J., if you please come up. Cheryl Blake. Crystal Porcelli. Kim Goglia. And Diane Marrero. So I, so I know from talking with each of you before, you're not new to the area, you're not necessarily new to Benita, but have started businesses in the last year or so. And thank you very much for that, because small businesses are every bit the heart of what Benita Springs is about. It's true to country in general, but it's particularly true here. So thank you for doing what you're doing, and if I could ask for a nice round of applause for these people. And when you come to City Hall, you get a certificate. So Kevin? Is it Kim? Yeah. Thank you.
Vera?
Take your name tags off, something. Crystal? And Cheryl. So thank you all so much, and thanks for coming by tonight.
We got photos.
Oh, we got a photo. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
So now we have a presentation which is actually a little sad, too, because it's part of a goodbye. You know, the Christian Brothers, formerly the Irish Christian Brothers, have been working hard in Benita for 30 years in Rosemary Park, and have done fabulous work through all those years, working for many years in connection with St. Leo's Church and other Catholic charities, and other charities around the area, have done so much for the community. So the brothers who are staffing are actually now, at this point, moving on to other areas, went to New York, to Miami, and we really thought it would be fitting to have a certificate of recognition for the work they have done, both for them and all the brothers and priests that, and volunteers that preceded them in Rosemary Park. So if I can ask Brother Tim to please come up, and Brother Bob, and also Joe Gallagher as well.
We go to.
Just because, just because your name wasn't there, doesn't mean you can't come up.
You are?
He's been doing it for 25 years.
So I'm going to read this certificate. City of Benita Springs, Certificate of Appreciation, presented to the Edmund Rice Christian Brothers. For many years of dedicated service to the residents of the city of Benita Springs, we thank you for your commitment and care to our community, specifically our youth, in the areas of education, food, clothing, and housing. Signed, Peter Simmons, Mayor of Benita Springs, July 5, 2017. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
I thank you all. Bob and I have only been here for two years. We were looking forward to more, but unfortunate circumstances. But I would like to say that at least three of the brothers who have worked here over the years are deceased, and we have pictures of them in the house, and it's, it's really a testimony, not just to us, but to the numbers of brothers over the years who have been here, and the foresight of Bishop Nevens, who invited us here. Bishop Nevens was a student at one of our schools in the state of New York, and so when he became the first bishop of the Diocese of Venice, he invited the brothers whom he knew to come here, and we had three communities. We had brothers down at St. John Newman, brothers here in Benita, and brothers up in Tampa, I'm sorry, up in Venice, rather. So thank you very much for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It says Margaret Wesley, but I guess Margaret is ill today. So representative of the Regional Planning Council. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jason Stalsfuß with the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council. I apologize, Margaret got the flu yesterday and is very ill and wasn't able to be here today. So the purpose of my presentation this evening is to talk a little bit about what the Regional Planning Council does, as well as the benefits to the communities that participate in the Regional Planning Council. So I really appreciate your time, and we'll try to be brief. I'd like to start by showing a brief, three-minute video that provides an overview of the council's accomplishments in 2016.
The mission of the Southwest Florida
I apologize?
The mission of the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council is to work together across the four communities to consistently protect and improve the unique and relatively unspoiled character of the physical, economic, and social worlds we share for the benefit of our future generations. This annual reward spotlights the legacy services we provided this past year to the Southwest Florida region. For fiscal year 2016, our revenues totaled $1,000,000. In addition, the sale of the Regional Planning Council's building and our subsequent move to a rental property resulted in significant cost savings to the agency, as well as improvements in efficiency. Now let's take a look at some of the accomplishments in the individual planning areas. In the area of public safety, our revenues were used to fund the training of 230 public safety officials for hazardous materials response. In natural resources, we funded the development of a total ecosystem services value system for Southwest Florida using the EcoServe method. In the area of economic development, we updated the comprehensive economic development strategy, which has leveraged $110 million of investments in the region through strong partnerships and collaboration. We also helped our members apply for two grants for the Amokale Culinary Accelerator, totaling $1.6 million. And we are one of only four areas in the nation to be awarded a 10-year rural promises of designation for the Glades, Hendry, and Amokale areas. This designation provides access to federal investments, involvement of federal staff, assignment of American lista volunteers, and the potential of tax incentives if enacted by Congress. We are pleased that our revenues could be used to provide over 17,000 life-saving trips to people in Glades and Hendry counties. Our grants and contracts funded over $600,000 for community planning, which demonstrates the positive social, economic, and natural resources in our region. And in 2016, we were awarded six federal and state grants totaling over $400,000, and have an additional four applications under review totaling over $440,000. This past fiscal year, our staff conducted 44 reviews, which provided community development recommendations. And we are happy to report that we closed the year financially stronger with over $22,000 in net earnings, which means there's now more technical assistance that we can provide to our members. Overall, the diligent oversight of our operations and finances has resulted in five years of clean audit reports with no adverse opinions, material weakness, or significant deficiencies. We are proud of our team's dedication and accomplishments this past year, and look forward to working together across neighboring communities for the benefit of our future generations.
All right, so that's a brief overview of some of our accomplishments over the past year and kind of where we're at financially. So I'd like to take just a couple minutes to talk to you in a little bit more detail about our rules and responsibilities and the benefits of participating in the Regional Planning Council. Up until a couple of months ago, which I'll talk about in a little bit more detail in a couple of minutes, there were six counties in the region that participated in the Regional Planning Council. So we provide the only forum in the region where representatives from each of the counties, cities, and municipalities within the region can meet on a monthly basis to talk about issues and priorities of regional significance. Some of those issues that we've discussed recently include Lake Okeechobee water releases, which have an impact on water quality throughout the region, climate change and resiliency issues, as well as regional economic development plans. Regional Planning Councils are required by the state legislature, and our statutory responsibilities or requirements that we're required to carry out include performing reviews of comprehensive plan amendments that are made by each of the counties, and performing DRI reviews for developments that have a regional impact. We're also tasked with managing local emergency planning committee, as well as providing intergovernmental coordination and review for various projects that are submitted for state and federal funding. In addition to our statutorily required activities, we also assist our communities and counties with various needs on an as-needed basis. We provide grant writing and research to many of the smaller cities and counties, especially in the rural areas. We've developed downtown revitalization plans for an area within Fort Myers, as well as in Clueston and LaBelle, and we recently completed a Florida solar, solar-ready study. There's a number of other projects and initiatives that are listed, just kind of as examples. We also assist in various areas of research, including developing flood maps for the region and hurricane evacuation plans. We recently completed an economic evaluation report for wetlands and mangroves in the region, and we assist in coordinating research and advocacy for regional legislative priorities that are of mutual interest to the cities and counties within our region. A benefit, a significant benefit of regional collaboration is that our area is designated as a federal comprehensive, a federal economic development district. And in order to get that designation, the Regional Planning Council in 2012 prepared a comprehensive economic development strategy, which is also known as a SEDS plan, and having that strategy in place makes us eligible for various grants that are available through the US Economic Development Administration. And the video highlighted some of the grants that have been awarded because of the SEDS plan being in place. We're currently doing a major update to the SEDS plan that will be complete within a couple of months, so it's important that we work with staff from each of the communities, including yours, to identify specific projects that can be included in the plan. When projects are included in that plan, they can then pursue funding through the Economic Development Administration for these projects that have a significant economic development impact. The main focus areas for the Regional Planning Council currently are looking at regional transportation issues, developing a regional economic development opportunity map that's going to identify shovel-ready sites for prospective businesses, for industries that are a focus. We're also working on coordinating discussions on water quality and water resource issues, as well as addressing qualitative life issues, including crime and safety. The video, I won't talk about it much now, highlighted the federal promise zone designation that we were very happy to garner for the regions of Glades, Hendry, and Amokale, and Collier County. Because of this designation, the region is now one of only four rural promise zones in the entire country. The promise zone designation is a federal designation that because of the designation, the area now gets priority for many federal grants through agencies such as the Economic Development Administration, the Department of Education, the Department of Transportation, Housing and Urban Development, and more. Many of the resources that we have access to because of the federal designation are also available to the cities and counties that are outside of the promise zone region, including, because of the designation, we've been able to develop many high-level contacts with US development of agriculture, and a number of other federal agencies that are now able to pass along to other communities as they work to identify funding sources for various projects. That concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to try and answer any questions that you have, also any input that you have on how we can provide value to your city and assist with your needs would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council? Fred?
Yeah. I know from Jim Beavers, it's part of the Estero Bay Management, that he's on your council. He's one of your staff. You all have been relatively successful at getting various-sized grants for different communities, and is that not right?
Yes, sir. Last year, we got about $600,000 in grants for organ, for communities within the council's jurisdiction, and the prior year, about $1.8 million in grants.
Now, basically, what typically, what's it cost a city to get a, some grant written?
Well, what we like to do is work with the cities and organizations to identify projects that they're looking to fund, and then we work to match those projects up through to various funding sources. Many times, we can prepare a grant for no cost. Sometimes, if there's a significant amount of work required in an application, some of the grants that I prepare, you know, it'd take me 80 to 100 hours to prepare, and there's a small fee, that's $1,500,000, $1,500 to $3,000.
Well, my point is that that may be a way that we can get some grants besides re-treading some other people here, so, thank you.
Yes, sir, and we are available to provide grant-writing services. I would ask that your staff contacts us or me to identify funding needs or specific grants that they want to pursue, and then we can work with them from there.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No, I think it's well worth the money we pay for it. I'm the liaison right now to it, to the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Center, and I, I think they're worth their weight in gold. They, they give a lot of insight, and it looks at the whole region. That's what I like about it. I mean, we've had discussions with Babcock Ranch, what was going on there, what's going on in Sarasota with DRI, and they're, they hit on every single aspect of it, from water quality to transportation, how's this DRI, and they put their input in on it, like, we really should look at it this way rather than that way, on these different examples that they've given. So, so I think it's worth being part of it. Why this is coming up, we've talked about it a little bit because of funding and everything like that. It was in the paper about the county doesn't want to fund it, but you know, the way I look at it, it's part of our statutory necessity that we have to do it. We had to have our, our comp plan amendments reviewed by them. They had no significant changes with it. If they had, they would have looked at it that way, and we went back to it. So I, I think they'd serve a purpose, and for, I think, I think we looked at it, it's less than $14,000 our dues.
Yes.
And it's, it's worth it, and we, we should belong to it, and we're going to pay for it, and hopefully with some grants in the future, it'll pay for itself. So I do, I do think it's well worth it.
What is the situation with your funding?
That's a good question. I'm going to explain it to you the best I can briefly, and if you have any more detailed questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them, and if I can't, I can get you the answers. So each, each county statutorily is required to be part of a regional planning council, and there's, there's an interlocal agreement that established the regional planning council back in 1972. That was actually, it was actually established prior to the state requiring counties' participations within the council, about four years prior. Recently, a number of the counties, Sarasota and Lee Counties especially, have indicated that, you know, they're paying a significant amount into the regional planning council, and they don't wish, wish to continue paying their dues. The interlocal agreement allows for an opt-out, opting out of the regional planning council with a 12-month notice. So they've given their 12-months notice that they plan to withdraw. They, their attorneys interpret the law in layman's terms, saying that they can still be a part of the regional planning council, just not pay, and not pay dues. There's been many counties throughout the state that have looked at this issue over a number of years. Some of the other counties interpret the language a little bit different. So the, the council, the board, which consists So the council, the board, which consists of commissioners, city council members throughout the region, has asked for an opinion from the Attorney General to determine if a county not paying dues and opting out would still allow, enable them to meet the statutory requirement of being part of the regional planning council. So we're kind of waiting for word back on that opinion. That opinion doesn't necessarily carry any legal weight, it's just an opinion, but that's where we're at right now. One of the issues that comes up is if the rest of the counties would decide to do the same thing and follow suit, there'd be no funding for the regional planning council, and the regional planning council would then go away, and then the counties wouldn't be meeting the statutory requirement, so how would that issue be addressed? Charlotte, trying not to take up too much time, Charlotte County actually opted just a couple of weeks ago to do the same thing, however, they did it with a caveat that they'd like to see the regional planning council's focus shift to issues and priorities that are, that would be a little bit more valuable for the counties, and they'd like to find a way to keep the regional planning council going moving forward. So they indicated that they've, they're going to be opting out, however, they're hoping to refocus the regional planning council so that they don't have to opt out and continue into the foreseeable future.
One of the other, just real quick, one of the other, I think Sarasota's other question that they had, if I remember correctly, if they're made to put back in it and not pay for it, are they a voting member of it also? That was the other question that we were asking the Attorney General, that if, okay, you can belong to it, and you don't have to pay to it, but do you still have a vote? Was the other thing. And to the regional planning councils, to their benefit, they've talked, we've talked in meetings in over the last three months on how to restructure, how to make it so more people are involved, because, you know, it is, it's the third Thursday of the month is when the meetings are up in Fort Myers, and it's hard for some of them to get there, and they went to the, as far as, like, they have the GoToMeeting app, they can call in and do it on the phone, so you don't have, for the Sarasota or the Charlotte County, or even the Collier County, you don't have to drive there to actually be part of the meeting. So they've, I think, been over backwards trying to address everybody's needs within the region, so.
My, in my opinion, just having this very preliminary introduction to the kind of work that's being done here, is that I think, as you look at your general goals that you articulate here, and they, and they're all laudable, I mean, you can't really argue that they're not important, but I do think that they're just too universally global, and that each of the communities would be more interested in projects that are clearly of benefit to the community involved. Let me give you an example, because one of the things that you have here is prepare a regional plan and identify placemaking projects that improve the quality of life. Now, that's something that we work very closely, or we're trying to develop here in Benita, and it seems to me that we would like to be the controlling interest there, rather than having a regional group directing what should be done. And sometimes, when we have institutions, what I call supra-governments, be they Lee County governments or regional planning agencies, you get away from the will of the people. So I think that some of the concern that perhaps, and I didn't talk to any of the other counties that are involved in this, is that they do not feel that specifically that they could get benefit from kinds of, the kinds of projects that you work on. And I think that a refocus is in order, and that we, as a community, and first as a city and second as a county, need to be more strongly involved with identifying specific projects. I mean, even the educational goals that you have here in a global, because the Horizon Council for Lee County does very similar goals here that you have, so how we would benefit more, or specifically from the regional planning agency, than what we would get from the Lee County organization to do that, would be a question that I have in my mind. And if we pay $13,000, you know, we would evaluate that, whether we think we get a beneficial interest, more beneficial from participating in your organization versus some other alternatives, or just going directly with our neighboring counties, which would be Lee and Collier. You know, other than water, I'm not sure, maybe transportation, because we're trying to do the Sun Trail, as we talked about earlier, but that's just my opinion, that I think a refocus is in order, and that cities should be involved, the municipality should be involved in deciding where that more specific focus is and how they could help us individually.
Thank you very much for your feedback. If I could clarify just a little bit on the redevelopment plans, revitalization plans, we tried to be kind of general in the presentation, but we don't try in any way to mandate how redevelopment is done, how cities want to revitalize their downtown areas. We just work to serve as a resource to provide, we work to provide resources that can be valuable in developing revitalization plans. An example, the city of Fort Myers came to us and said, "We'd like to do a study on the MLK Corridor and develop a revitalization plan, but we don't have the in-house resources to do this study," or, "And we'd like to pursue a grant to do that study," so.
So did you do that study?
So we.
And did they pay you specifically for that, or was that just included in the fee?
Well, we, they asked if we could identify a funding source to do this study, so we applied for a grant through the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and got a grant for $30,000 that paid our salaries to assist them in getting the community input and hosting community meetings, and, you know, that $30,000, about $15,000 of it was paying consultants to do renderings that were included in the downtown revitalization plan. So we were able to assist and provide the technical assistance to get that revitalization plan done in the way that they wanted it done. We just helped in identifying the resources to grant and obtaining the funding in order to get it done. So same thing, we did the same thing with the city of LaBelle and the city of Clueston, got grants to help them with the plans that they were looking to do outside of the Regional Planning Council. We just kind of served as a conduit to get it.
Conduit to get the grants.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I just wanted to say thanks to you and Margaret in particular, was a big help to the city of Benita Springs on a pretty controversial thing we had four years ago, and also for your stalwart defense of the environment in this area. There are a lot of people who give lip service to it. The RPC actually works at it, so just my own personal view is, I really appreciate that, wanted to thank you for that.
Our pleasure. Thank you very much, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Carol and Ashley, we have Carol Green and Ashley from.
I have a cheering session here.
Yeah. Good to see you.
Thank you, sir. It's good to be with you this evening, and good to have an opportunity to share just a few thoughts that we've put together for you, and then lead into the conversation about some of the other things that we'd like to look in the go-forward. Anyway, it's great to be with you all this evening. I just briefly want to touch on the overall view of the session, before we get into any specifics. This, there's a lot of words that have been used to describe the 2016-2017 session. The one that I probably heard the most is dysfunctional, which is unfortunate, but I can explain to you why that word keeps coming up. There was a lot of tension this year, more so than usual. I mean, there's normally always tension during anything that you have to do with politics, and you have different people with different initiatives that are involved, but this year, it made a little bit more difficult because of the fact that the executive, our governor, had part of his budget zeroed out by the House early on. He zeroed out, the House zeroed out Visit Florida, and the economic, the Florida Economic Development that we were just speaking about, the DEO, was completely, their budgets were completely zeroed out by the House. So you can imagine that the governor was not very happy. I know the governor was traveling the state, actually calling out members of the House in his presentations about the fact that they didn't care about job creation, et cetera, which of course is one of his talking points that he uses all the time. I'd also tell you that there was another problem afoot, and that was the fact that the House, under new leadership this year, had major, major rule changes in the way that they were going to do business. And I'm not being critical of them, that's certainly their prerogative to do, but it did create a little bit of a dysfunctional feeling because of the fact that the Senate was adhering to the tried-and-true old rules, especially when it came to budgeting, and the House had totally new rules when it came to budgeting. So recently, last week actually, the Senate Appropriations Chair, Senator Latvala, was here visiting with many of us, and he actually spoke from the podium at lunchtime and said that it was the most difficult year that he'd experienced in his fifteen years of being a senator. I can tell you, I've been involved for twenty years. I don't know how many years you've been involved, but.
Enough.
Enough. That we can all tell you that we all saw it that way. We, you know, in comparing notes, we all saw it, that there was some difficulties there. Trying to actually balance a budget when you have one house, the House, doing it in their way, and then you have the Senate doing it in the traditional way, it was hard to see how they were ever going to come together. Well, guess what? They didn't. That's why we had a special session. They had to take some time to figure out exactly what they were going to be able to do to bring those two different budget plans together. And you can also read the clips and everything that we read all of the time, of course, and dissect, and it made it very difficult, too, for the staff to actually reconcile those line items together because they were in different lines. So it made it a little more difficult for everyone that was involved, so there's no wonder that there was a special session. I will tell you, however, at the end of special session, that the three top folks, the President of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, and the Governor, all were able to get the majority of their top priorities reinstated. So everybody shook hands, everybody walked away, patting each other on the back, and everybody was really happy, including the fact that the Speaker then went on a speaking tour with the Governor, and here they weren't speaking for two months. But who would have known? But that's exactly what happened. Getting into a little bit more of the things that are important to us, I know that you are all very much aware of the fact that when it came to the budgeting, that we did not receive the monies for the top two priorities with the Pine Lake rehydration, and then, of course, the Quadrant Plan. Again, there was a tremendous amount of confusion. I will tell you that I personally presented both of those in front of the Senate Committee, so they were timely filed, they were timely filed in the House, too. I know that Chairman Caldwell, Matt Caldwell, was our champion in the House. Normally, it would have been Leader Rodriguez, however, because Leader Rodriguez was not in a position to be able to carry a lot of personal bills because of his leadership role, he asked Chairman Caldwell, and Chairman Caldwell has always been a good friend to our area, so he was there taking and carrying all of the heavy water for us. I would tell you that when it comes to things like water projects, it's very dicey. It's always very dicey every year, and in fact, I know Ashley was checking today about the facts on this, 33% of water projects were vetoed. So 33% right off the bat were vetoed, including some local projects that were here in Lee County and in southwest Florida. So we did note that this was, this year, we had the highest amount of monies ever vetoed by anyone. So I just.
Almost double.
Almost double of what we've had in the past. So there was a lot of, a lot of concern, let's say, about those types of things. On a positive note, however, we did secure 3.5 million in capital project dollars for the completion of the Lover's Key Education Center. The capital dollars are something that's really difficult to get, and usually, when you get capital dollars, the first thing that you want to do is start making sure that the governor doesn't really notice them, because the governor likes to veto capital dollars. So we were, we were quite concerned about it, actually, and we were able to meet with the governor's staff, they understood, we had all of the projections, we had all of the drawings, the schematics, et cetera, and so now we know that that is going to become a reality here for the city, which I think will be something that will benefit many, many people in years to come. Also, back to the good news, if you will, on funding, one of the things that we've put into place, and one of the things that we've talked about a lot individually, and certainly with your city manager, is the fact that we really want to get ahead of it this year, and one of the things that we were able to do is to spend some time with the Senate Appropriations Chair, Senator Latvala. Senator Latvala was very kind to give us the time and energy and effort to be here last week. He actually looked at the area, so he's very much familiar with what we're really talking about. He has all of the schematics on that. I know that we're going to be doing some updates and things as we go forward, if in fact, that still is the top priority with the Quadrant Plan. So he, we had that nice dialogue with him. He's very, he's very committed to trying to make things successful for us. Now, that being said, we also had an opportunity, I know that Councilman Forbes and Carl were able to also speak with Senator Pasadomo that same day, and Senator Benacristo. Senator Pasadomo has committed from day one, when we saw what was playing out in the legislature, she said that she certainly would make that one of her top priorities. She does serve as the Vice Chairman of the Transportation Appropriations Committee in the Senate, so she's in a good position to be able to help us with that, and Senator Benacristo appeared to be on board to help, too. So I think that we made a lot of, a lot of headway when we met this past week, so we certainly had their attention when it comes to that. I think Mr. Latvala actually came around and said something to the effect of, "Explain to me what this Carol Green's been asking me about, this Quadrant program." Something to that effect. I didn't do him a justice, I'm sure, but, but anyway, he and I have been friends for a very long time, and he certainly cares about what we're trying to do here, so I appreciated his time in doing that. Let's talk a little bit about policy before we get into some of our thoughts about going forward. It was very obvious this year, and I know that you all know this, that there seemed to be an attack on home rule. I mean, it seemed like that lots of bills that were getting filed were just one after another, and it's like, what else can they find to attack us with? It's very obvious that there was an attempt, when we worked on those bills, we were attempting to help carry the message that if we couldn't completely take them down, at least get them amended so that they weren't quite so, so much a bitter pill for us to swallow. Out of all the bills that were actually filed, this, policy bills that were actually filed this year, which there was a bigger number than usual, only 8% passed, and that's a very low number for the number of bills that pass in any given year. Again, some of that's back to that dysfunctional stuff that was going on between the Senate and House, the dynamics there, but, but the unfortunate thing is, we did have a few that did pass, you know. Fortunately, the, I think we counted today, I think there were three that we felt really had a pretty big impact, but the thing that's going to be interesting to keep in mind is that even though that happened, the ones that failed will be back next year, because you're going to have the same dynamic, so that's going to be a real problem, and you're going to also find the ones that we were able to get amended to the point of where they weren't such a bitter pill for us to swallow, you may want to start looking, or will start looking, for glitch bills, for people to say, "Well, you know, we didn't quite get the entire apple, we only got that bite." So we're going to be looking at that, too. But again, there were more wins than losses, but it was still, it's still very hard to take with some of the things, some of the legislation that was coming up, and part of the reason is, I didn't find the exact quote, so I'm not going to use it, I certainly will not paraphrase or pretend to paraphrase the Speaker of the House. However, he was quoted that he's very much in favor of this type of legislation to have the state take on more and more responsibilities. So I think that's something that we all need to be mindful of. I know that you all have received the final report that came out to you, I fairly linked the fourteen pages or so, but who's counting, right? Ashley, Ashley counts, I know.
I know.
But that, that report has detail on many things, and with the fact that you have an agenda in front of you, we're certainly glad to go into detail on anything that's in that report, or anything else that you'd like to make comment about, but I certainly don't want to read the report to you, nor do I want to get into each and every one of those particular issues, but again, we're more than glad to detail anything that you might have seen there that makes you uneasy, or that you'd like to have more clarification on. We'd certainly like to thank you for coming to Tallahassee for Advocacy Day. Councilman Forbes reminded me that we were counting steps that day, and we all had a lot of steps that day. We make it, we make it work, we move pretty fast. We did get time for lunch, we made sure that we had time for lunch, but at the same time, we try to make sure that we really pack a lot into the day, so that everyone has an opportunity to start visiting with some folks that are up there, not just our local folks. We try and stretch that out to others that have potential impact to legislation that is important to us.
It's almost more important.
It actually is.
It's almost more important to.
It actually is.
With people that we all see every day.
So tonight, we're really starting to, already start to turn the page, because the committees, the committee weeks have come out already for this fall, for the 2017-2018 session. Session will begin on January 9th, so we will start meeting right after Labor Day, and the date is not in my head right at the moment, but it's the week after Labor Day in September, we start our committee weeks right then. So it's really important that we, again, go ahead and get priorities organized as quickly as possible. as possible, even though we've already had some opportunity to meet a little bit, anyway, with, with Mr. Latvala and get some paperwork and things into his hand, and with, with Senators Pasadomo and Benacristo. We really do need to start working on priorities, and I know I, I had spoken to Carl about that, too. I know, I don't remember what you said, Mr. O'Flynn, was it, you're, you've got the summer group here, you didn't have everybody here yet, but, but it is something that we do need to get on top of as quickly as possible, so that we can go ahead and start making meetings, and start going ahead to look at any potential that we see that's coming. Thank you.
Thanks.
I, I didn't let Ashley hardly talk, I'm sorry.
Counsel?
I just got, excuse me. With our list of priorities we had last year, going forward, do you see anything on that list that we really shouldn't go after that? From the feedback you've gotten from either local delegation or from other delegation, it's not worth our while to, to pursue, and maybe we should change our priorities?
There's nothing there that's really stre- that's really striking me. I can tell you that it, the paramutual piece is, is going to be there again, I mean, because it's still, it's still kind of-
Right.
Yeah, it's still, yeah, it's murky. It's still really murky, but it hasn't gone away. So the paramutual piece is still going to be there. Other things that, I mean, obviously, you're, as you've always said, home rule is very important, and home rule is going to become even more important, given what we're seeing. So I would tell you, yes, definitely go there. The fracking piece seems to be something that people are starting to really raise their eyebrows about. So obviously, making, uh, making your statement on that makes it very clear as to our direction when it comes to that. So I think, too, that, I haven't spoken with, I spoke to Mr. Generalis, who's been the, the key contact we've had with Lover's Key. I believe that they're all set now, so that, that seems to be that they've received everything they need, other than-
That all.
Other than just massaging it a little bit, just to make sure that the monies flow the way that they're supposed to, but that's all internal stuff that we can help him with. But I, I, I feel goo- I feel good about where we're at with some of these things. Don't have any problem.
I just have a follow-up question to that. I wondered if, because there seems to be a lot on this page, and, and would it be better to focus on a couple, two or three of these? Or do you di- do you hurt your case by asking for too much stuff, or is these all-
I don't believe so.
Or even priority, I mean, I, I, my primary, primary, priority would now be home rule. I mean, even though I, I believe in the transportation, the other things, because that's what, they're two different things. What we might want to focus in for funding, and then-
Yes.
-policy issues. And, and I obviously were very distraught about the small cell device thing, and I know that one, one of the issues that had been, I think you had reported on, was this idea of conforming signs. I don't know if you remember that one, which I thought, oh, if they pass this, would, just would be horrible. But there's all these little, like nuanced legislation that we are not even aware of, that we would have a position on, and, and it's all revolves around home rules. So I think that that would be so important for us in order to do the work that we're trying to do. And then the whole funding thing, we still want to go with that. But it's not that we don't pri- we're not interested in this list, it's just that some right now will cause us more trouble than others.
I can, I can tell you that what, what, I would look at it as two different things, really, just as you're alluding to.
Right.
You're going to look at your funding priorities that you have set, and that's going to be one thing, and that, those are big asks, no doubt about it, because they have a considerable amount of money attached to them. And water projects are always, it's, every year, it, it's-
You don't know the right reason.
There's so much challenge to that every year, but, but the, but the quadrant plan and everything, and some of the direction I know that the Senator had given us about some things that we could do, I think that those are important. I think you can actually look at that as, as one pot, and then, literally, and then you can look at the other, your policy issues as things, as these are the way we feel. Now, I will tell you that when Ashley's doing the reports, and when things start popping up there, if we have any question at all about it, I mean, we don't take that list and say, "Well, they, you know what, they didn't mention anything about a referendum on Homestead, so I guess we're not going to worry about that." We follow all of it. Anything, and if we have any question at all, we have your city manager on speed dial to be able to say, "Hey, look at this," because we see, we see a potential problem here. So we don't take that list and say, "This is all we're looking at." We take that list as saying, "These are things that we know how you feel, and that you have strong opinions about," but then we, we're watching every, everything. You watch everything.
We watch everything. I mean, we probably, my bill filed for you guys is at least two hundred. I mean, it's anything that involves anything with the municipality, or even a county, I watch those as well. We're watching those, and we tend to not raise our flags until the bill really starts getting momentum, it starts moving. Because a lot of times, bills are filed, and they don't go anywhere. They'll get a committee reference, and then they just die away. So there's no point in spending our energy on those, but when we start seeing them bubble up, that's when we contact Carl, and we get some direction from him.
Or we, or we look at the member who filed the bill.
Right, oh, yeah.
That's a big one. Got it, you've got to read the tea leaves there a little bit, too. If you see a member that fired, filed, filed the bill, and it happens to be someone who's in the top tier of the leadership class-
You get concerned.
You get, yeah, you, you pay attention to that one. It, it moves to the head of the pile.
Yeah.
Fred?
Yeah, I think everybody got a copy of a newspaper article, and, and I had sent this to Carl earlier, and I said, "I was going to pass this out, and I think at the next meeting, when all hands are, the whole crew's here, we could talk about whether we want to add, this is something we're either against, or we would support."
Why don't you explain what it is for purposes of the public?
Yeah, well, what it is, is Miami has got a new plan to get rid of their sewage and their affluent and their sledge. Instead of pumping it a couple miles offshore, they're drilling wells ten thousand feet, and there's a little nice drawing on page three of this, it shows where the aquifers are and all that. But they're pumping, they're going to be pumping three hundred million gallons of sewage, affluent and sewage, down there a day, once this gets done. And I think, I think, to me, this is as bad, if not worse, than probably fracking. So I think, but everybody's got it, you can research it, ask your experts, we could even ask the Regional Planning Council what they think of it. And it's, it's one of those things, it's not in the money bucket, so you can oppose it, or hope that a sponsor wants to go against it.
Michael?
Hi. Carol, I, actually, I just had two, one on the policy and one on the funding. I've had this question on the home rule. Where is the Florida League of Cities? I mean, there, obviously, the population is pretty dense in Florida now, a lot of it's in cities. So why do these home rule attacks get at least to the ten-yard line, or some all the way to the goal line, with that dynamic, or, how do you think of that?
They have a lot of, they have a lot of, in the House, they have a lot of support, actually, because of the fact that, of the, of, the Speaker has been pretty adamant about that. Not so much in, in the Senate. In fact, I, I can tell you that, that Senator Latvala publicly has stated multiple times that he is not a fan of any, any desecration of home rule.
Right.
He feels very strongly about that. So that, that's one thing that helps us in our battles with those. A lot of times, you have someone that you're talking to that really, truly doesn't understand, I mean, it sounds, it's, sounds like a good idea on paper.
Well, no, my question is, isn't the Florida League of Cities pushing our point-of-view hard, and how do, wha-
Absolutely. We, we, we work with them all the time. We interact with them every day.
Right.
And, and stay in tune to what they're doing, you know, on their website and what they're doing. Now, they're doing it, but they have a lead person in each of the areas that, that we're talking about, there's a lead person for each of the different segments of, of policy.
Okay.
They're one person. So our interaction with them as contract lobbyists is that, that we use them as a resource, and we certainly make sure that, that we, that we agree, because we don't always agree with everything that they're doing, because of the fact that their membership is diverse.
Okay.
And their priorities are not always your priority.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, we do work, yeah, the League of County, I mean, we work with both. We interact with all of them. You know, it's, it's a very small town in some ways. Most of those people have been in those jobs long enough that, that we have had interaction with them for many years. So, yeah, we're on their mailing list, we're on their website all the time. So yes, we do keep in contact with them. I participate every week, I, I'm with them on a telephone conference with all the contract lobbyists, so we, we do, we do stay in, in close proximity to them. But again, they don't always agree because of the diversity that we have throughout the state, such as what Councilman Forbes brings up, the, the issues they're dealing with in Miami aren't necessarily issues we're dealing with here in, in Bonita, or in even Lee County. But, yeah, we interact with all of those folks on a regular basis.
And I guess on the funding, my observation would be, just from, obviously, don't have anything near your experience, but looking at who has received money, there is, there seems to be a sense of queuing, that, you know, you, you don't normally see it happen in the first year. Is that a fair observation?
It depends on who asks.
Depends on who asks.
What member asks.
Okay.
And they'll, and they'll prioritize, the, the members, the seasoned ones, the seasoned members will, will prioritize, too.
Yes.
In the things that they believe that they can actually get across the finish line, and not have it vetoed. Because that's one of the things that we all are looking at from day one. You know, nothing's ever veto-proof. I, nobody can use that term, because nothing is.
Right.
You never know, but at the same time, you will find that, you know, give, for instance, we'll take a, a member of the House and say, "That House member has, they're putting in forty-five projects. They have to prioritize those."
Right.
So those things happen. When it comes to water projects, a lot of times, what will happen is, they'll say, "Well, you know, gosh darn it, you know, I, I put in Pine Lake last year, and it got vetoed. So maybe this year, I'm going to put it in." They got, they got put into the process, I could promise you, all of them did, all the paperwork was timely filed, et cetera. But, you know, it may well be that, you know, that, that happens sometimes with water projects. Gosh, you know, they got that water project two years ago, so maybe it's someone else's time to get their water project.
Then let's go with the beach project.
Right.
Because it's a different pot of money.
Right, and, and that's exactly right, too.
And it didn't need to be a standalone bill, either. So it didn't have to go through that process in the House.
Okay.
So it was heard in the, it was heard, and it was public in the Senate, but it didn't meet the qualifications in the House to be a standalone bill, so it never had to go through the committee process. It made it easier to fund on the House side.
Even though I sat and argued with the attorney that represents the House in her office one afternoon.
Well, it was a new process, no one knew, and according to her, it didn't meet the guidelines, so we didn't have to do a bill.
She won.
And it, we, and we won.
Yeah, we did, we did.
At the end, because we got the money.
But at the same time, I, I would, I'm sorry, Mr.-
No, I'm not, that's fine.
Is that-
Yes, yeah.
Back to Councilman Forbes and the issue, I believe that the issue you brought up on Miami, I believe, too, that you said, sir, in, to Carl, maybe, I'm not sure, that you were going to bring that up to the League also. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Because I think that this, that's one of those things that the League really needs to-
Yeah, and on, and on that subject of League, I'm on one of their policy committees, and most all the policy committees have agreed to make home rule one of their major legislative initiatives, or things are either for.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's good.
Good. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I-
Oh, Carl, sure.
Yes, just, just briefly, first off, I want to assure the council that standing orders with the lobbyists are, home rule is, is defendable, it's got to be defended. Unfortunately, the other thing is, is that, yes, we spend time on policy proposals and advancing those, as well as funding, we spend more time in a defensive mode for things that come up from even other parts of the state. You don't even know what they're thinking, but you still have to defend it. And, and they do a great job of doing that, and we coordinate with them on those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
So, real, just briefly, so council wants to defer any action tonight, perhaps-
Well, somebody said we don't have a full House, and I think that's fair. I think we should have a full House.
Would you like to revisit this on, then, on the nineteenth?
Yeah, whatever you want.
We'll set it up.
That's good, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Carol, thanks, thanks for coming by.
Absolutely, my pleasure, good to see you all.
Here we have Mr. Dolmer. Regarding the community development fee schedule. Hey, John.
Good evening. We, uh, we started this discussion back in February with a general concept of which direction the council would like to go, and as we continued that discussion, it was, it was flushed out a little bit more to, we're looking to have something that reflects a little bit more of what it truly takes to process a planning and zoning application. And we would also like the idea of including a portion, or a hybrid portion, of a self-funded model. And what you have today is, is a continued evolution of that process. What it shows is an update in fees that are a little more accurate in terms of what it takes to process an application. And also, what you don't see in there, but what you'll see in the memo, is a discussion on a cost recovery model that would pass through those fees for outside consultants. And right now, that would generally include, in terms of what we're proposing, the Therac in Spain office, our transportation consultants, and also a tool design. Those costs that they would build a city, we would then pass those through to those applicants that, that require that review or that input. And, and that way, I think that those increased fees that the city has seen lately, or these increased costs, can at least be recouped by those that are using those services. And that is a general description, but I would like this to be a little bit more of a discussion, so you can let me know what you like.
Counsel?
Well, I just want you to help me to read these charts a little bit better.
Yes, ma'am.
So I take, in the, in the beginning parts of it, where you have the X mark, where you have hybrid cost recovery, those are the areas where you think you could recover some costs, and that's, and you're asking us whether we approve of doing that. And further on, under, some of them, you don't have them marked, and that's just administrative actions. The reason why you don't have them under hybrid costs is because those, those kinds of activities wouldn't lend itself to do that?
Well, there are applications that, even though they're administrative, require some of that review. However, most of those applications, and I think we went to this a little bit the last hearing, most of those applications that require this level of review or that input tend to be those that involve a public hearing. And so that's where most of the focus will be, if you're looking to add up the percentage of Xs, that's what you'll see, but there are some of ap- those applications that are administrative in nature that still include a portion of that hybrid cost, simply because of the nature of that application and what needs to be done to, to approve it.
So you looked at each one of these individually, and whether it was, required a lot of special activity that might be able to be recovered, you included then, and-
Yes, ma'am.
Is that how you did this?
And there was a handful of people that, that I had look at it individually, and we, then we compared our notes as to what we were all thinking. And this kind of came out of that discussion. So I'll say that each of us probably had higher and lower fees for just about everything that was proposed, but out of that discussion came this proposal.
So I'd like to take a shot at working backwards on this. So, you know, I noticed for tomorrow, for Friday's budget workshop, it actually shows the recovery less than before, so I had a question about that. So just, maybe that's wrong, but hold it off to this, is it wrong?
No, no, sir, I'm, recovery of-
Meaning fees for community development applications.
Okay.
As less than the previous year, so.
And we'll go into, go ahead and finish your statement, I'll answer that.
All right, fine. So, but leave that off to the side. I'm struck by two things. One is the building fund, which is a separate permitting operation, which, of course, stands by itself in really a lockbox, unfortunately. Can't take any money out of it for everything else, so we got, like, five million dollars sitting there that's not really worthwhile anywhere else in town, because we can't use it. But that works, it looks like, when you look at it every year, so that the people who are coming through that door and getting a permit for building permits are paying an amount which covers the cost of that operation. So, I, I don't know personally that it's, you know, our job to sit here and go through thirty categories and say, I think this is good. My personal view is this or that, as much as this is kind of a brother or a sister to that operation, and why not get ourselves in a position where, like the building fees, we're having more of those who are using the system pay. Of course, in a, in an appropriate way. We don't wanna be out of whack with where other areas are, and that's why I brought up the concept of Astero. So, that's really my observation. It's kind of, what's gonna get us there? Because I can't tell from looking how many hour, and I guess, and one last point is, why not, if, on the cost recovery, if we have projects that are consuming big chunks of community development time, why not community development hours as well?
Okay, going back to the first question on, on the anticipated reduction in revenue. The reason why there is a reduction is because current development patterns tend to involve residential, large residential tracks where a developer will come in and build that development out to completion, which usually takes anywhere from, depending on the size, a year to twenty years. There is not much of that land left. And so, under current development patterns, you would obviously see a reduction in both planning and zoning fees and also in building permit fees. What we have not accounted?
And impact fees, by the way.
And an impact fees, that's exactly right.
Right.
What we have not accounted for is an uptick or in, or an increase in commercial development. And what we are waiting for with what we have seen in terms of the numbers, basically the volume of residential development that's occurred in Benita Springs, not only within the city, but also within Astero and within North Naples, to justify increased commercial square footage. We believe that that will occur sometime in the relatively near future to the, having the rooftops in place to justify the additional square footage. But what I can't say is when those that are ready to invest money will determine its time. And that is not included in that projection, because I, I can't tell you when that will happen. I also cannot tell you when redevelopment along Old Forty-One will begin to, to take hold, because we know that as land is consumed, there's only so much vacant land left. And so, we'll begin to see more redevelopment, we'll begin to see more commercial development, we'll begin to move away from the development pattern that we've had for twenty, twenty-five years, which is generally a single-family or mixed residential use developments.
Right.
So, that's why you see that projection in place. I do think that it will be wrong, I just do not know at what point it will be wrong, when we start to see that increase in that commercial development. Getting into the, the fees, I don't know of a city or a county that has a truly self-funded planning and zoning department. And the reason why I say that is?
Well, I'm not going there.
No, I understand.
I'm talking about the middle ground here.
And, and so, that's what we were looking, looking to do. I know that there were some ideas in, in last year's budget discussions on trying to bring this up to the point where it more adequately covers those fees. And what we did was we looked at, at a twelve-month period of time, the, the applications that came in during that period. And our estimates were anywhere, these fees would increase those anywhere from, from fifty thousand to, to a hundred and twenty thousand is what, basically what we came up with. I wanna say this came up with somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand based upon a period of time in the past. You'll never see that exact number and type of applications repeated again, so that value does nothing more than compare a, a past period of time. I think that we are going to start to see a shift, and I would also recommend to this council that whatever you do here, when we start to see a shift in our development patterns, that you be willing to look at these fees again, because I feel comfortable processing the applications that we see every day. I can tell you what it takes for certain applications, how much time, how much effort, number of resources. But as the requests change, those resources and the amount of time that it takes is also gonna change. And they're going to require us to answer questions that I haven't answered or don't have the experience in this jurisdiction to answer adequately yet. So, what we're looking at today is bringing those fees more in line with the amount of time and, and the resources that, that are brought to bear to review an application. Not, obviously not getting to the point where this is a self-funded department like you would see in a building department, but getting us closer to more of a cost recovery. And essentially, reducing those costs for outside consultants that the city's recently acquired. Those were, those were our main goals.
Anybody else? Fred?
Real simple question. We're about to hopefully get an additional consultant working on the vision, more emphasis in the land use and things like that. Will we be able to bring them into some of these reviews as they get their sea legs and recover that cost, too?
If this council gives a, a direction towards that cost recovery model, I would be happy in our next discussion to bring back a template of what that would look like with our current consultants, with the possibility of adding additional consultants as they're brought on. It's really, it really needs to be generic enough to, to reference rate sheets for certain contracts. That way, their billable hours would be included by reference, that they would be billing the city on, on a monthly basis anyway.
Well, I for one think that before we buy this, we ought to modify it so that if we wanna do it, it's already in there, that we don't have to redo it.
Well, you could just say consultants.
Correct, correct. And, and, and obviously, this would not be something I would ask you to, to pass. This is, moves us along as a direction, but I would like to bring something back to you for our next discussion that more specifically addresses that cost recovery portion of it, if, if you're willing.
Okay. Mike?
Well, a couple of things. I guess the first thing, as far as the consultants with mainly the Theriak in Spain, we mostly use them if we're having legal issues with a project. It's not a normal consultant like we go with Tool. So, my only thought there is including their fee, it's kinda like, if I'm having a problem, why would I pay for my opposition's lawyer? I mean, I can understand under a loser pays, but I mean, just for every day, why, why would I pay for, you know, the city to fight?
While I will say that some of their questions they ask become more adversarial, they are also involved, at least from my perspective, just as much on a clarification role as they are a defensive position. So, we, a lot of times, I know this council remembers you said to ask their opinion on a particular item, and we also do that. So, that request for clarification is, is more of probably what takes their time than it is to defend a particular position.
Okay. And then, oh, go ahead.
Right, so as I understand it, city council during two different actions asked for two different things. One was they asked for assistance with complex litigation, and that was the first prong. And that was your Pelican Landing case, Raptor Bay Benita Grand Mine, and then we spread out, including Parklands and some other litigation associated. The second prong was asked a few months later, and that was to, and there's a case called Cherry. So, in situations where, and I'll give an example, during an appeal process, there's case law dealing with when the city attorney or the agency attorney is acting both as the attorney helping staff as well as the attorney helping council. And fortunately, we prevailed the, the last time it was called on, called out. But at the same time, it does pose a conflict. And so, of course, my number one priority is city council. They do provide an excellent review as far as looking at the applications, because I will tell you, I get lambasted by applicants if I start giving comments. The next word is, how are we gonna get a fair hearing if the city attorney is providing those comments? And you may see those letters from time to time. So, they've been doing more work with staff and doing reviews and assistance on a case-by-case basis. That's not an adversary, it should not be an adversarial situation at that point. It only becomes adversarial depending on what actions are ta, or final agency actions are taken. So, during the cost recovery, it's not to deal with attorney fees, it's to deal with staff assistance, with more sophisticated land use assistance. Now, we still provide land use assistance, more generic use by our office, for example, Platts, which you signed today. Yeah, so, so that, well, you'd be surprised how many hours go into that. But those are things, why you would have the outside and why it's not, cost recovery is not paying for your opposition, it's paying for a thorough review of the application.
Okay.
Okay. So, you're looking for guidance as to whether?
Yeah.
Some more questions?
Well, sorry.
And I, I wasn't done either.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
And the, the, my other concern was more of just John and Jane taxpayer. Smaller things like tree removal, that, you know, that's more than doubling in price. And, you know, why is it doubling? And, and also, is there a, a way, if it, if it's tree, like, we wanna see gone like a Norfolk pine or something like that, do they have to pay a fee? Could we waive the fee for an invasive or something like that?
To answer that, if you look on the, the prior page, under vegetation removal permits, there, it's highlighted because there is no fee. When you are looking for the tree removal, that I believe, let me get to the next page, that goes into, into more of the tree delegation program and tree removals as part of development orders that go to the tree committee. So, we do not look to charge for the removal of exotic trees. Those are for the removal of, of native trees or trees that would normally be in place had it not been for, for development.
Okay, so, somebody on their, you know, next to their house, they wanna take down a Norfolk pine, or they coming to?
Well, that's the first step, yes. Single-family residential would not be applicable. The second step is if it was on a commercial piece of property, we are happy to coordinate and work with people to remove exotics. We're not looking to charge for the, for their removal.
Okay. Amy? Greg?
Yeah, I did, either one, doesn't matter, ladies first.
No, I, I just wanna follow up on Peter's question. From a recovery of your effort, the community development department's effort, is the current fee supposed to compensate you for a certain percentage of the, of your cost?
It's not, it's not based on a, on a certain percentage, and there was a little bit of a balance that we were looking to provide. I know that there was some sentiment at the last discussion where we were looking to get closer to the cost recovery, but at the same time, not punish applicants with large increases. The reason we came up with drawing the line at outside consultants and not so much your regular staff, one way or another, was because I found that the most difficult applications generally tend to be the smallest applications. And those smaller applications tend to be brought on by local developers, and I will, I use that term loosely, generally they're landowners that decide to build a building. And it's the first time building a building, and there's a lot of hand-holding that's associated with that, because, because of a small site, it takes a lot of effort to figure out how to make it work. Large sites, especially large residential developments, as I was outlining earlier, those tend to move relatively smooth. There will be areas of contention on how certain portions of the code are interpreted, but everybody is in, is in a rhythm in terms of what's needed, how it's needed to be done. Consultants are well-versed in this type of development. So, you don't see the same type of hangups on bigger developments where there is a larger, larger revenue stream for, for entitlements than you would see on a smaller project where somebody has held a piece of property for twenty years and that they decided to put a small office building on there. So, if this council directs, I'm more than happy to put in there a step or a point in, in the review where our time becomes billable. However, I was a little concerned about who it would impact in, in our previous discussions on, on avoiding smaller developers.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, sorry, just got a couple of questions. I guess my issue on this is, is, you know, we as the city or we as city council have employed Tool Design or McMahon and Associates, and now the one that, that we're probably gonna vote on tonight and negotiate, we're setting those forward based on our thing. So, I guess where I have the problem is now we're, you know, that was our decision. Now, we're passing that decision on to these builders and these other people. Is that really fair? Because they may have started down this road beforehand, and hey, here's what the fees were, now you're gonna have to pay a cost recovery on that. With that comma, is, is there gonna be a usual and customary number of hours, either from Tool Design, look at this right here, should take you an hour, but now they bill them for four hours? And, or, let's say we get rid of Tool in another year and go with whoever, Corumban Associates, and they charge twice that money. Three times that money. So, i- is there gonna be a, a ceiling on either A, time, or B, fees?
To answer your first question, you are not the first city that has employed outside consultants, and you are not the first city to use them as part of your review team. There is a certain level of experience, there's a certain level of specialization that comes with hiring somebody that's strictly in charge of looking at one aspect of development, whether it's a vision, whether it's the transportation of, of a corridor, and you have that right to employ them. Obviously, anything that increased cost is not gonna be popular with those that have to pay the fees of those costs. That's a very easy statement to make. However, when I come back to you, what I would like to do is, based upon what we've seen so far with our outside consultants, look at, what do we look at in terms of an initial payment? And I'll call it an escrow fee, mainly because I don't wanna reinvent the wheel. Astero has done this for outside council, and, and I think in terms of how this portion of their development process works, it has been relatively successful. So, and I say that because it's accomplished what the council's wanted, and that, as you're concerned, as a member of the council, is the, the true measure. So, I think that what we'll do is we'll, we'll look at how much a fee should be paid at the time of application, and also, that should be based upon what we would expect them to pay for a typical application. If something happens where this becomes unique or becomes complicated more so than an average application, then obviously they would need to pay an additional fee to keep those hours paid for. However, I really don't think anybody has an interest in, in dragging these applications out. If anything, I've seen our outside consultants do their best to work them through at a faster rate. So, there, there is, with the consultants that we have, I feel very comfortable with the process. Other consultants, you would have to see how they would operate.
Yeah, because that's my concern. Right now, we're paying the bill, and either you or the city manager is like, hey, let's speed this up, you're on the clock. But when someone else is paying the bill that's not their true bosses, they may not, and the other, I mean, some of it is, and there's quite a few cost recoveries in here, I just wondered about that.
Well, it's, it's, there's a lot of applications where it could apply. However, just because an application is turned in, where that box is checked, they may take a look at it for thirty minutes and decide there's no issue from their perspective.
And there would be no fee at that point, or minimal at, at best.
Correct, correct.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, just, just to add on to that, we are watchful of these hours that are being consumed by the consultants, because we have an obligation to make sure that the process goes well, but also that the review is thorough.
Right.
So, we wanna make sure that both of those things are in place as we put this in, in process.
And it doesn't matter who's paying those fees, you are still their boss.
Okay.
Because you control their contract.
Okay, so you're looking for a general direction to move along, along the way you laid out here?
Yes, sir, and, and there are, there are three fees I would like you to provide, at least a little bit of direction specifically. And those are on the second page, at the bottom of the page, under the heading of Downtown Redevelopment Area. These are new fees because they follows a new section in our Land Development Code. Councilman Corumban, if you look at the, the top heading, says joint use of parking?
It's the third page, third page.
I got the same problem.
Third page at the bottom.
It's the third page.
Yep, yep.
That's why it wasn't there.
Okay, we got it.
It's the third.
And those, and those fees do not currently exist. What this is, is basically the zoning review for essentially a development order for downtown. And we current?
So, now there's a total exemption from paying anything? Is that what you're saying?
The process for approval downtown is different than it is anywhere else in the city.
Right.
Anywhere else in the city, you see zoning applications and you see development orders.
Right.
And in this particular case, it is morphed into more of a development order, permit approval. And as a result, there is not a specific zoning fee or a zoning check to that application right now.
So, it's because we don't charge for development orders or because we don't charge for them downtown?
Because we don't charge for zoning downtown. We charge for site plan approvals downtown, but they tend to be, those, the application is engineering in nature.
I'm just asking if it's generic or if it's specific to downtown.
Specific to downtown.
Okay, thanks.
So, your question is, do we wanna charge or not charge? Is that what your question is, John?
Yes, sir. And?
Well, my, my general view is, we've gotta look at downtown. So, obviously, we want it to succeed. Question is where the line is. So, you know, we've got twenty-five to thirty- So, you know, we've got 25 to 30 million dollars in there right now, so I don't think we should have a Rorschach response anytime anybody says you want to charge a fee, or charge an impact fee downtown, oh, the answer has to be no. On the other hand, I'm not saying it's yes either.
I wonder if we could, you know, just as dialogue, I wonder if we could do something sort of like we talked about doing with the hotel motels, with the lower nose fees, all right, we will waive these-
Well, you've got nothing here.
Well, that's what I mean, we'll waive these fees for the next two to three years. In two to three years, we'll revisit it and see how it's going.
To me, Greg, is part of the white paper that Carl's doing. It's part of the package.
Gotcha, okay.
That's the way I look at it.
No, that's fine, I'm just throwing it out there, because I think John's looking for direction. Do we want to see X or Y there?
What I would recommend to this council, and obviously for discussion, right now, we are looking at having a $25 fee for building permits, so that, well, for zoning review. And, and every building permit that comes in has somebody make sure that the setbacks are met, make sure that the height's there, zoning conditions are met. In this particular case, if you had something that was very low in nature, you would still account for some time that has addressed one of this council's concerns, but you're still not looking at increasing the application cost by anywhere near what would be considered a significant amount to offset any concerns about escalating fees.
Twenty-five bucks, I don't think anybody's gonna-
Well, and I say 25 only because that's what we're looking at for, for zoning review of building permits.
Sorry, Fred?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Is, I'm just asking if it's possible, because one of the things that we did on reducing that hotel room impact fee was we said, you have to have it, construction started within a certain time, otherwise you lose that discount. Is there any way we could kind of do something in there that would kind of give, if we don't charge you for this stuff now, if you haven't started in the ground, you know, footings and coming up out of the ground, then that free fee goes away and they're going to pay the course?
Well, I would think that what you would want to do is to pass a fee with an asterisk, and the asterisk is simply have a note that says, this fee comes into being on such and such a date, and that date can be of your choosing.
Can I make a suggestion, which is that John, not here, when he comes back, put in whatever he thinks are reasonable fees, consult with Carl about what's happening in the white paper.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great idea, because I'm a believer that we should at least cover our hard costs, which is what we're paying them to review. And so, we might do typical review times, as John indicated, on simple zonings, we'll, we'll bring back.
Okay.
If that's the direction of council, we'll bring that back.
Are we all set?
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else good? Thank you so much. We are up to the consent agenda, and does anyone want to poll anything? I have A and B I'd like to poll.
I have B and the other, what is it?
C?
The cancer one.
C?
B and C, yeah, B and C, together.
Okay. Anyone else?
Move the rest?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that included the errata, item J, correct?
Oh, what was that?
That was the ranking of the firms that the committee interviewed the other day.
Oh, absolutely, we're okay on that, yeah.
Just making sure, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Why don't we do B and C first? Do you want to know?
Yeah, I, I just want a clarification on the process that we use when we sponsor nonprofits. I mean, do we have any criteria? I'm in favor of both of these, it's not, not these particular ones, but it just brought up a question in my own, my mind, what we, what do we do about that, when somebody says, will you sponsor us?
Sure. I'm Communications Director Laura Taylor. When a nonprofit would like co-sponsorship from the city, they will request it in writing, and they will also include documentation that they are a nonprofit organization.
So, the, other than the fact that they're 501(c)(3), we don't explore the particular one? We just do, anytime they request it, do we, we agree that we should do that?
We do try to work with every organization that is a nonprofit.
That was the question, basically, we just pass it through, basically, okay.
So, I do think we at one point had, had a preliminary discussion, maybe this is another preliminary discussion about this, which is, I know it's difficult, and who knows, there could be issues about asking about specifics, but if we had a policy that crafted some specifics, particularly, let's say for starters, what percent of the proceeds are actually going to the charity? It might be something to think about, because right now, we have a situation where anyone who's got a 501(c)(3), and this got nothing to do with this one, all right, but, let me take one little step back here. 501(c)(3) in, in the federal law, and I know this from some charities I work with here, is now a no-brainer. All right, you and I can walk in, basically, and get a 501(c)(3) tomorrow out of Washington. It's not what it used to be with a long-form application. The long-form application and the time only comes if you are raising an awful lot of money, or you have a certain amount of money in the pot. So, it just strikes me that, that's something to think about in this process. And I'm not saying with respect to these, but I think we should be thinking about it.
And I, there are, I mean, like, a community foundation of Southwest Florida keeps a directory where you, they have all kinds of financial information and, and that we could do a screening without, if they happen to be on the directory, but they have almost every organization that maybe we should use a procedure. I thought, the reason why I asked is because I thought that we had an interest in having entities that directly paid back to our immediate community, but that's not the case, it could just profit anybody.
Most of the organizations that do apply to host the events in the city are giving back to our residents, or our area.
Right, well, that was my thinking. But, as long as we have the policy that we open it up to anyone, I think that we should have some kind of other policy where we, maybe we don't want it, that's not important, but maybe it is.
Could we look into that, not tonight?
Sure.
Give it some thought.
Mm-hmm.
I, I had an unrelated point on B, which is CREW, and, and that is, we have, this is not on the 501(c)(3) point, we have organizations that are in the highest standing, like CREW or community associations, that come in five, 10 times a year, or more, asking each year for the same thing they got the year before, and the paperwork's got to be done, et cetera, et cetera, which has got to come to us. I'm just wondering if we could have some process where, like, take a CREW, could get a five-year approval, and, you know, as appropriate each year, you have to show insurance, or whatever the heck they got to do, and if something goes wrong, we could have a process to have them not do it. But, I mean, so, for example, where I live in Benita Bay, they've had concert programs there within Benita Bay for years, I think they have like three or four a year. As far as I know, each one has to come to the city each time, I mean, they just have some guy playing a guitar, and it's more than a certain 100 people, or 200 people show up, and they got to go through this process. So, that's, if Carl, you give some thought to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, that would be more helpful to staff, if you, if council were to allow staff to do that, we could certainly do that more administratively, could be a five-year deal, you know, if there's any changes, if, as long as we could handle them, if they were,
Right.
If they were major, then of course, we'd want to bring them back to you. We think we want to take a look, Laura and I have talked about readdressing special events generally, not only because of some of the things that you're talking about, it's also been raised, do we really need to have special event permits within the gated communities? Obviously, we have special events because we are concerned about certain things that need to be controlled, traffic, ingress and egress, noise, impacts on neighbors, those kinds of things. But, whatever the council's comfortable with, we're certainly lined up to start looking at those kinds of things.
I'm not suggesting exemption, I'm just suggesting something that saves everybody some time, I don't know what the people think.
And the other only point is just dates. Our venue is extremely popular, so we do try to work with each organization to make sure that their dates are available. So, if we're giving them a five-year, we'll just have to take a look at dates and make sure that we're not giving you up years, or dates that other organizations may want, and we're not locking that organization into the five years without having other organizations have the ability to use it.
I was thinking more along the lines of like a preferred organization, because we have that within our gated community, there's certain charities that we sponsor, and as, as a community, we voted on that, that that's, these are the ones that we want to feature, so to speak. So, like, for CREW, that would be a featured organization, but it doesn't mean they would get the same date every single year, they would still have to participate in the calendar, but they wouldn't have to go through all the other stuff that, that, you know, that's involved in a, in a, in a permit, if we could facilitate that a little bit.
Sure. I think it would be something we'd definitely work with you on, and take a look, and we need to look at the special event permitting process, the fees, it's, it's probably time now to take a look at all of it.
Okay, anybody else?
No, I just agree, I mean, I think going along the same lines like you're saying is, we give them a five-year, just throwing out there, five-year deal, but then year after year, it's approved administratively by the date. That way, it doesn't have to come there.
But I'd also like something where, like, Brenda Brooks doesn't have to come and fill out all the paperwork all the time.
Yeah, no.
Just kind of a-
Streamline.
A template.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. So, move to approve, did we approve, no, we have not done this, move to approve B and C?
B and C. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Okay, so we only have A left, and I, I pull this because this is actually something I put in last year, and we have not talked about it, so we're talking about it here. I, I actually think staff did a good job here, but it's more than we need right now, in my view. In other words, we've got a parks master plan that you've done. And the concept I had, and maybe it's just a matter of semantics, when I had put in the concept of a master plan, was really focusing on design elements. And to put it simply, we have like Riverside Park that everybody thinks, oh, looks fantastic, the Dog Park looks fantastic. There are other places that we'd all agree, River Park, et cetera, that could use a little more oomph, and a little more of a, I don't know if it's a wow factor, but improvement with respect to design. And so, that's really where I was going, and I actually then had another thought, which was sparked, which is, so now we've hired on the bike walk on Terry Street, Alta, they've got landscape architects, they're about urban design. The other day, I guess this was our green sheet and the consent was, we hired on Beach Road, what is it, DKP, DPZ, they have those talents as well. And I'm just wondering, rather than go forward and spend this money on this at this point, that, why don't we get staff with some mileage under them, working with those organizations, and see if those concepts can travel to what we might want to do on parks, is my thought.
No, I agree, why, why have another third consulting firm when that, one of the other two that we have may be able to do the job for us?
There, there are two areas of parks that have been brought up to me recently with my interaction with my district, and one of them is the notion of neighborhood parks, and the, the particular area where I was suggested that they didn't have a neighborhood park where they could bring their children for the playground, so, but I think that we could just do that in, you know, in-house.
We actually have several neighborhood parks that have playgrounds.
Right, well, they felt that they didn't have anything convenient to them, so I don't know if that's been assessed, you know, throughout the, the city, whether there are certain areas that are underserved in that way. I, I don't know, because I didn't look at it personally.
It's actually in, in your district is where we, we don't have any neighborhood parks.
Well, that's what, that's why it came up then.
We don't, and that's mostly due to all of those neighborhoods being gated, and having their own, and we don't own any land in, in those areas.
That's what I told them.
Yes, we, we don't own any of the land, so where we've owned land and areas that are not gated, we do have a lot of neighborhood parks. And we have them in different areas, but you are correct, in, in your district, we don't.
And there's, I assumed, from what you told me, that there's not really a good solution for that because of limitation on land and everything.
Right, we would have to purchase land in the area.
But that is something that you could look at yourself to see if there's anything that we could do. And then the, then the follow-up would be for playground equipment itself, they were talking about children, whether we have a distribution of the playgrounds that would be appro, would, would be useful to these different communities, and whether we could do anything about it.
Yes, currently, we, we just installed the one at the Dog Park, and the one at Community Park, which is our largest playground, we're hoping to be finished, hopefully by the end of the week, but if not, next week.
Well, I had mentioned the Dog Park, but I guess that's a new one, that's why you
Yeah, it's brand new, yep, it just opened.
know that. I get the right answers.
Yeah, so we, we have five playgrounds in, in our park system, but again, the, the furthest one north would be in the Rosemary neighborhood.
Right.
At Lightner, so that would be the furthest one north that we have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Move to reject A.
Move to reject? I don't think we have to do that, right? We just pass it?
Just pass it.
Just pass it, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yep.
We've got the direction, we're good.
Yep, yep.
Okay, mayor and councilmember items, discuss traffic issues around Wisconsin and Pennsylvania. Michael?
Yeah, well, this one's been coming up for years, people in my district have been concerned about drivers speeding down Pennsylvania. And so, just thinking, I know there's a developer that's looking to develop right there on that corner of Wisconsin and Pennsylvania, and then we're also looking with the quadrant study, that may lure more people to use Pennsylvania, so I'm just trying to think of, get out ahead of things and see what we can do to calm traffic, keep the speeds, you know, people doing the speed limits, not actually lowering the speed limits, but just maintain the speed limits. Because we have had issues, cars going into the creek right there, a couple of years ago, after Celebrate Benita, somebody on their little motor scooter got hit and killed on Pennsylvania by a speeding car that, I don't believe they ever caught the person. So, that's just my hope that we could look at that. I know one, one of the things that was first brought up, I think it was Michigan, they were asking if we could do like a four-way stop there, but I know there's, the curves right there, and I figured that would be too close to have a stop sign. So, I, I figured Wisconsin would probably be a good spot to do that, and if Matt, if you want to say anything to it, or, and, and especially if we're looking at doing like a roundabout or something with somebody coming in to develop, then, you know, be the time to do it before they develop, so.
Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director, we certainly can look, I looked at our traffic counts along Pennsylvania, I think right now, in high season, we're around 3,900 cars per day through the corridor. Just, just one thing with stop signs, typically, they're not used as a traffic calming device. The traffic engineering folks kind of actually frown on them as, as a, as a way to slow folks down, and really prefer things like roundabouts or chicanes, which are forced curves that physically make drivers actually slow down and, and use the corridor as it was designed. So, we certainly can tap one of our traffic engineering folks to look specifically at that intersection as to what options may be available for traffic calming.
And, and another thing I, I know with our bike path, master plan that we have, I think it calls for putting a sidewalk on the other side of the street and doing a bike path down. Last time I was in Gainesville, I noticed they do a lot more of the speed table crosswalks. It's, it's not a speed bump, it's like a speed hump, and, and they use that for traffic calming, and also to, you know, alert drivers that, hey, this is a crosswalk, people are going to be crossing the road, so possibly things like that as we're, you know, redoing the sidewalks and everything down there, so.
I, I think Mike's making a great point, particularly about the fact if we have something that's going to happen there, we ought to get our act together about what we think.
Yeah. Yeah, if we can get with community development and-
Yeah, I'm in favor of traffic calming techniques, I wouldn't be in favor of stopped streets unless someone could make a good case for it, but I would also like to have it integrated with any sidewalk or bike path that's supposed to go in there. And so, when I looked at it just on, when I drove on it the other day, it didn't seem to be a problem for me, because it's sort of wide open at Wisconsin, I could understand why that was a problem, but I'm not there very often, so maybe other people drive like a maniac down there, and it could be a problem. But I would rely upon you to try to come up with some proposals.
Fred?
Boy, in addition to that, until we can get it all worked out on where it's going to be, and speed table crosswalks, could we not request that the sheriff put some, for lack of a better word, speed traps there to see how bad the problem is?
We could include additional enforcement efforts there.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick point on the, I hear what you're saying, but on the stop signs. Just a quick point on the, I hear what you're saying, but on the stop signs. But on Shangri-La Road, we have them, and they are working. I mean, I think they're working.
They are, they typically, a stop sign goes through a warrant process.
I know, I know, that's detail.
And it's, it's one, it's, it can be a challenge when we partner with our traffic engineering folks to, to meet those warrants. We most recently put one in at Paradise and Shangri-La Road, and really the, the sidewalks that have been constructed in the area, as well as the high school coming in, were the additional factors. We, we had looked at that intersection prior, and unfortunately, it had not met warrants. So just stop signs typically from the traffic engineering community are a more difficult thing to get them to support.
But this is a city street, right?
That's correct. So, so there are, you know, if, if city council felt strongly, we, of course, could still go forward, you know, with signage to do that.
You know, I've passed by that cross on the side of the road many times. I mean, you know, that comes from people going too fast there.
I, I also get what you're saying, though, stop signs aren't really traffic control devices, because it may actually encourage somebody to speed up, because they just stopped, now they want to go faster, but, so I mean, I'm not saying...
I defer to Mike.
I'm not, I'm not saying differently of stop sign, but I'd like to see something done to help control the, the speeding on the street, so...
All right, thanks.
And speed tables are, I, I didn't mention, the three things when you hear traffic calming, which is kind of a modern buzzword, it's, it's modern roundabouts, chicanes, which are forced curves, and speed tables. So, so those are all potentials that could be...
And, and they're nothing like speed bumps. I would never advocate for a speed bump. I absolutely hate them, but the speed tables, uh...
Well, we have them in our, we have something similar in our community. Every time there's like a place where pedestrians would cross, they have pavers, which are just slightly raised above the, the roadway, and that actually slows people down there. And, but you're talking about something that's a little more elevated than that, but...
Well, it varies. I've seen some that are, you know, slightly elevated.
No, we have, they're like, they're like ten feet across, but you come to it, it's a different kind of, even if just coloration, it's a different coloration, and we have that within our community, it does work.
Just, just one, and I will leave you alone. Speed tables are something that can be demonstrate, they can be tested, similar to what came up in that presentation.
Yeah.
You can get them made out of heavy-duty rubber material, and you can place them down and see if that modifies the behavior.
That would be good.
And then if it doesn't, you know, take it back. It's, it's unsightly, but it is...
We don't care.
It gives you that temporary ability to test, like, so it may be an option that we could look at relatively simply.
That would be exciting to do a test.
Do we have to have a traffic warrant for speed?
Well, I think we can figure a way out.
We'll, we'll do it below the table.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. Anyone else on this?
No.
I had one quick one, which is on a mayor council member item. So on Friday, we're having our, I guess it's a workshop. So my question is, if we meet then and decide we need another meeting in the interim, can we do it then?
Yes.
We can decide then?
You're talking about the budget workshop?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, budget, yeah.
Right. If you need to continue the budget workshop to a time and date certain, you can certainly do so.
Okay. So if we were in there and said, we want to, for example, schedule a meeting for the following Friday, or something like that?
Yes.
We can do that.
If you're continuing it to, let's say, the next Friday, please make sure you coordinate with Dev and Meg.
Well, no, I'm just saying we would be doing it on a fly, so...
You could just sched, you could just schedule it like any other meeting.
Okay. I wanted to make sure, because it was a workshop, that's why.
Well, this is a voting workshop.
Oh, so it's a council meeting.
You're going to take a vote on this meeting on Friday, on the millage.
Okay.
So it is a voting meeting.
All right, we're good then.
But if you don't have enough time, would you do, continue the meeting to another date, time and certain?
Date, okay. Answers my question. Any, any other council member items at this point? So, is this you, Audrey? First reading of the following zoning ordinance?
Yes. Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. I'll read the first title block into the record. This says, zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by TriStar Management Service LLC to rezone 1.79 acres from C1 Commercial to Commercial Plan Development CPD for maximum of twenty-two thousand square feet of self-storage, located at 4276 Benita Beach Road Southwest and 27696 Okina Street, Benita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is the first public reading of a zoning ordinance. No comment is permitted at this time. The ordinance will be scheduled on August fourteenth, so that's August, not July, starting at nine AM in these chambers, beginning at nine AM.
Okay. I would move that item?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please, sorry.
I just have a question. Wouldn't this be subject to the moratorium, or why isn't it?
There should be some language in here, or will, I believe there is language, or there will be language stating that it does meet the criteria, and as well as they will continue to...
Okay, because I didn't see it in here, but that's okay. That was my only question.
Okay. Anyone else, questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
It's condition fifteen on page seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The next ordinance is a first reading of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, extending Benita Springs Ordinance Number Seventeen dash O One, Temporary Moratorium on Cannabis Dispensing Businesses, Providing for Geographic Area Covered, Providing for Penalties, Conflicts of Law, Providing for Severability, Scrivener's Errors, Providing for an Effective Date. This is a first reading and public hearing, public comment should be taken at this time. I reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient, and a copy of the affidavit of publication is on file with the city clerk. I want to point out to city council, because we did receive a few comments from folks out there, that this is a temporary moratorium on the cannabis dispensing businesses, the retail operations, so we can figure out how to proceed forward with that. I'll present you with a memo in a month or two, but here are your options, and give staff additional direction. This does not prohibit people from smoking medical marijuana. They can obtain it, they can go to, if, if there are a patient or caregiver that is registered from the Office of Medical Marijuana through the Florida Department of Health, they can obtain it, either go to a facility, or it can be transported to them, consistent with the state law. And as council knows, and I just want to make sure the public is aware of it, other than a few places where the city prohibits the smoking of medical marijuana, it is permissible within the city boundaries. So we had people thinking we were blocking medical marijuana, and that's incorrect. At this point, we're only doing a moratorium until we can figure out what to do based on the new legislation.
Okay. Public comment, anyone?
Yes, for the record, Kathy McGrath. I, I just would like Audrey to clarify something. Does this also cover the charlottes, the oil that stops the seizures? They can still get that?
Again, different companies, if you go to the Compassionate Care website, or what used to be called Compassionate Care, they changed the name of it like last week, so it's a little difficult for me. There's a list of about ten companies, and some of them carry that, some of them do not. All of, all of the companies in Florida that are dispensing entities, it's a vertical alignment, so if they're processing or creating the oil that's known as Charlotte's Web, and you have a prescription from a qualified ordering physician, which is another criteria, they can deliver it to you. It cannot go through the U.S. mail, but it can be provided by courier.
Well, good, that's because, that's the one thing. If you've ever seen any of these stories of what this, it's a miracle thing, these children that have two and three hundred seizures a day, it controls them. Or I think there was, as far as the smoking, well, I don't care about the smoking, but there were people at previous meetings that even documented, you'll remember, that they had someone in their family that by using this marijuana, it alleviated the horrible side effects of the chemo treatments that they were taking, and also, I would, I just always felt that would be a real travesty if this moratorium was going to delay these people getting it. But Audrey explained it well, and I thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. And if you go to the website, you can see different companies have different products.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else in the public? Counsel?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? I'd like to just make a comment, which is, I think we'll all remember that there were many municipalities that put in place a one-year moratorium. And we said, why don't we just limit it to six months, and if things are not quite settled, we'll extend it by six months. And that, to me, is really what we're doing here. We take it in two bites. It's not like Benita Springs is approving another moratorium, we're just putting ourselves in a position that other municipalities are in. Anyone else?
No, I agree with you. I think what we're doing is we're trying to figure out where we're going to put these, if, if at all. And that's what we're doing, since the state finally made their ruling on what's going on.
The problem is the state did not make their ruling, so that's, that's why we're having to extend this moratorium, because we do want to have our input into where we want to have these, these retail units.
This is an issue with federal authority that is one of the issues out there. I just want to make sure, pointing out that this ordinance is scheduled to the local planning agency for its July thirteenth meeting, as well as for second reading and public hearing at city council's July nineteenth meeting, beginning at nine AM.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion of second, we had discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, Audrey. Alex?
I'll take this one. Alex Boswell-Ebersole, Assistant City Attorney, for the record. This item is going to be a first reading of an ordinance with no public comment, and I'll go ahead and read the title block into the record. An ordinance dissolving the Beach Road Estates Community Development District pursuant to subsection ten of, of section one ninety point oh four six, Florida statutes, providing for conflict and severability, and severability, and providing an effective date. If it is approved, it'll be scheduled for a second reading and public hearing for the July nineteenth, two thousand and seven, city council meeting, and that's a meeting that starts at nine AM.
Counsel?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay.
I suppose I don't have the ad for this. Have you, you have the ad? Okay.
Audrey, is this you and...
Yes, the next one is me, and this is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, setting forth the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule, Providing for Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, Inclusion in Code, and Effective Date. This is the second reading and public hearing, public comment will be taken at this time. Counsel, you've seen this ordinance multiple times, and it has the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule added in. The affidavit of publication is on file with the city clerk. I apologize, I will check later to make sure everything's sufficient.
Okay. Nicole, any comments, or...
Based on the first hearing, we didn't make any, any changes. There weren't any for me to make, so it is exactly the same as the first, first reading. So unless there's anything else you would like to review, questions, I'm here.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right. Public comment, anyone? Rick?
Now, this, I approve the increases in the fees and stuff, but at this time, I'd like to mention that we had an application to vacate a water access area.
Why don't we hold that for a public comment, which is actually right after this?
All right.
Anyone else?
No, it's the second reading.
All right, we had a motion of second. Debbie, roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll make sure it's been advertised. If it hasn't, we'll just re, you'll see it again.
Okay, right. Motion's approved. Now, public comment, Mr. Steinmeier.
Recently, I gave a copy of a, the plat of South Riverside Drive Development. It was one of the first, probably one of the first developments in Benita Springs. There are areas that are public access to Rosemary Creek, also, which would give access to Island Park. It was originally laid out as a neighborhood park for the development in the twenties, but the develop, of course, with the depression, it didn't get developed. There's areas in there that belong to, to the public that have not been vacated, that I would like the city to address. Our former city manager, when we started out, he managed the next, at the intersection of South Riverside Drive and Park Forest Drive, there's a neighborhood park there that was undeveloped and overgrown with Australian pines. The city did take that over and cleaned it up, and it's a nice area. It's the, it's used for the historical society parks there when they have their meetings once in a while. Right in that area, there's access to Rosemary Creek, there's also access to the river. I gave a, a copy of the plat, which I got in ninety, ninety-six, I guess it was, to Mayor Peter Simmons recently, and I'd like to see that pursued. Now we got, and then it's Riverdale Vacation Application, there's another spot that the public, we talk about water access, there's access to the river, that we should be looked at, should look at in a longer term, to be fair to the neighborhood and to the neighbors. But I'm sure there's a lot of other places, like you know that one down there where the Osprey Nest is on Hickory, there's another area that gives access to the water, that belongs to the public, that could be developed into something. I'm sure if we looked around, there's a lot more. I know that in that Riverdale area, there was two other, two or three other access places that had been vacated in the past. So I don't know how we could maybe just look at a plat of the whole riverfront fro, process and see if there's any more areas that can be developed in the future, because we're going to have more people, we're going to need more facilities, and thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Hey, Kathy.
Hello again, Kathy McGrath. I have to put my two cents in about yesterday. I mean, what can I say? I don't want to take the wind out of your sails, because you all who were there are probably going to say something, but I've never seen such a crowd. You needed a shoehorn to walk around in there, and I was guessing eight to ten thousand. I've heard, I don't have any official estimate, but I've heard there were even more than that. And it was, we had that hiccup when the sirens went off, and we had to delay doing everything, but it just went so well. And Laura, and Patrick, and Charlene, and Kendra, they did a great job, and it was really, really wonderful.
wonderful. And the other thing I want to remind everybody, okay, today is July the 5th, Film Fest. The gala is November 2nd. You know, where has the time gone? So if anybody out there watching this hasn't heard about it, there's a lot of money to be made, and there are brochures here, and you go onto the city's website, and then Antonio also, he has email, it's info@benitaspringsfilmfestival.com. So get your entries in. The theme this year is historic Benita Springs. So get all your information, come out and make some money. Thanks.
Thank you. Cue.
Oh, no.
Who are you going to embarrass tonight?
Yeah, exactly.
Hi, Jim Corumba. Well-known, I think, to most of you, but for the record, anyway, husband of Councilwoman Corumba. I wanted to just add my compliments to those expressed by Kathy regarding yesterday's festivities, and to add specifically that I had the pleasure for the first time. Had, I'd been at the parade, but not as, in a sense, a participant, but I had the opportunity to drive Amy. And it was a wonderful thing to see all the people all along the parade route, different kinds of people, all having, by that I mean just every kind of, old, young, whatever, boy, girl, a great variety of Benita Springs people having a wonderful time. So I wanted to compliment the council for the parade, and of course, those, the city staff who put it together and do such a great job.
Quite a part.
I know, I know. I see Greg there and all his colleagues. So that was a wonderful thing. I would like to say, I'm hoping someday we'll have a band, and I guess when the, we have a high school, perhaps, we'll have a high school marching band, which I think would be just terrific. And then one final comment, I'd like to assure all the council members that when it came to trading fire with the water pistols coming in, the deputy mayor, whom I followed in the parade, proved himself to be more than an adequate defender of the people in the parade, did a great job. So it was a lot of fun, and I just wanted to add that to Kathy McGrath's compliment. Thank you.
Oh, back again.
Kathy McGrath forgot something. Anybody who missed Councilman Greg Dewitt tossing the T-shirts out, I think the NFL ought to come scout him.
Is that where they went?
Hauling mackerel. He almost threw them out of the park. Congratulations, Greg. No, I wanted to give you.
Anyone else? City Attorney's Report?
Kathy, sir.
Okay. City Managers' Report?
This will be brief. Mr. Mayor, first off, again, great event yesterday. I want to thank staff, Laura and her entire team, which includes the Parks Maintenance folks as well, all our great volunteers, our sponsors of the event, as well as our participants. And the account, I believe, came from the Sheriff's Department. They thought for fireworks, we were at about 12,000 people.
Wow.
I mean, amazing. So even as the kids' events were folding up and going away, people were filling in those blank spaces as they went. So it was pretty amazing. I was not in the parade this year, this is my seventh parade, and I was not in the parade this year because I took the opportunity to actually watch the entire parade, and I was by, standing by Greg and the judge's tent, and just had a great time. It was, it was a wonderful event. There's lots of equipment out there, lots of equipment, and it seems like it's all in the parade, so great job on that. And then, speaking of the high school, if you've not been by the site, walls are going up. It's amazing. So congratulations to them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Mayor and council member reports? Fred, you want to go?
No.
Mike?
Well, I just want to reiterate what everybody's been saying. Great event last night. Everybody did a great job. I especially do want to thank Parks and Rec. It was a disaster there, trash-wise, and they swooped in early this morning and cleaned it all up, and they did a great job. So thank you, everybody, for putting on the event and cleaning up the event, so thanks.
Amy?
I just want to reiterate my thanks to the entire staff for putting on such a great performance and an event for the city, and I love the parade, so I'll have to come back next year.
Greg?
No, I just want to say the same thing. Parks and Recs and everybody's staff did a wonderful job for the parade, helping out with the parade and helping out with the fireworks and everything at the band show. As far as the band goes in the parade, we've tried many, many years to get a band. We've, one time, we even paid Golden Gate Band to come down and play with us, or play for us in there. Just can't get them to do it because it'd be in summertime, but maybe when we get our own high school to be part of the charter, and we'll talk to the principal S.D.s about that, and maybe we'll just kind of have to make it happen, so.
Great.
But great time. And the only other thing I'd like to say is, if you haven't been downtown by the Fire Department, the mural is 99% done, so come by and take a look at it. Laurent did a wonderful job, and just a wonderful job.
Oh, we agree.
And we got money in the budget next year, in the Fire Department's budget, to do a little memorial park down there, brick pavers and everything.
Nice.
Great.
Yeah, just to add what Greg and others said, a big thanks to the firefighters' union and the district on the parade. It was, it's unique, and it's really special. So thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. And to Special Events Committee and staff, great job yesterday. So it looked kind of rough on the weather, but it wasn't rough on the weather, which it cleared out at 5 o'clock, so that was great. One other thing, Rick brought this up, and about the access on the river, and I do think we have a lot going on in the city, and we do have the report that the Parks Department got about possible access areas. We have other things moving around in a good way. We have Imperial River Conservancy that Kathy's a part of, and Dan Danar has worked, and they're willing to raise money to help with respect to public access points along the river, and doing it in a modest way, so we're not overrunning, you know, it's compatible with any community along the river. So I think there's a lot of good energy that's evolving with respect to that concept, and it's something to pay attention to. That's all I had. Friday, we have our workshop, which is at, what, 9:00, Carl? And we're, it's going to be down below?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everyone will be on the floor.
Right.
Right. And we've beefed up the communication systems. We tested it today in our works.
Well, that's good.
So everyone can be heard at all times.
Okay.
Okay.
And the basic concept is you'll present with respect to the budget, but then individual department heads will be available, we won't have them do a dog and pony show necessarily with respect to every one of their budget items, but be available to ask questions.
Right. I will, I will do, well, first off, we'll talk about the five-year projection.
Right.
I mean, trying to stay high level.
Right.
I will do a high-level presentation.
Okay.
Much like I do before, I've done before, but it's important information for everyone to hear. And then, and we'll be talking again about, again, some high-level things broken out by functional categories, broken out by fund types, again, staying very high. So if the council wants to take a look at anomalies in the numbers and changes and those kinds of things, we can certainly do that. And then after that, whatever direction the council wants to take, we'll be as prepared as possible.
Okay. One thing, I did not get to the back of the book, the thick appendix in the back, and it may be there, but if it's not, could you come prepared with what actually the total number is on the increase in the medical insurance, and the total number on the increase in the retirement? Because those are the things you're pointing out in your letter upfront as driving increases in cost in individual units.
Yep. We'll do that.
Yeah. Approval of minutes of the 16th of June and the 21st of June?
So moved.
Second. Comments? Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Public comment? Yes. Ah, double dipping.
It's a second bite. No, 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 I really, I wanted to compliment you for the comments you made at the presentation at 6:00. I thought the selection of the music, and I thought that all the comments that you made were a great credit to our community.
Well, thank you, Jim.
And I just thought that, having kidded you a little bit about your dexterity with the water, on a more serious note, I thought you did a great job.
Thank you.
And represented us all very well.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Lions Club won the Bud Race.
Yeah, yeah.
But we got the ringers in from Estero High School.
Next year, we want to see actual Lions running.
I think we should outlaw that.
Next year, we'll see actual Lions.
I don't think you can buy athleticism.
Well, I mean, they were all 6'3", and they weighed about 100 pounds.
16 years old.
And they were flying down the street.
Wasn't exactly...
They were like a six-year-old riding a bed.
Yeah.
Exactly.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. Thank you all. Our meeting's adjourned.